Getting close to the same time about pickleball because there's been some interest. I'm getting, trying to get some dollar figures together right now. The existing basketball court at the fun park is going to need some resurfacing in the near future and that might be a time where you're going to decide by resident priority, do you want to have basketball or do you want to have pickleball courts? Do you want to have that volleyball court there that is seldom if ever used or do you want to turn that into a bocce court area?
Well, again, we've been talking for a while about actually trying to put some feasible plans together for the Commons Park. Personally, I wouldn't vote for any additional, any additions to the fun park area with, you know, ongoing complaints. I would almost look to build out something somewhere else and almost phase down that part just because of the location where it sits. So again, maybe it's time for us to ramp up those conversations on putting, you know, some type of plan together for the Commons Park and we've been talking about it for at least a year to get some. And we had some movement on it, right, with the consultant that came out. I think I thought the next step was to do some, get some conceptual plans together. But I think some of that depended on the survey, seeing what people want in order to... So it's a process and that's why, for me, putting the bocce courts up at the soccer park to impact fees, it's in an area that's not being used, but ideally, we would want to look at...
Tie it to a package.
Yeah, and put it in a location that we can monitor, that's, you know, that is out of the way, you know, so...
The other one, I was a little surprised with the line is great. The club put in two bocce courts. Now, they are the material that is the clay.
Yeah.
They're not the synthetic much. They're nice. And then two pickleball courts and including the design and everything is a hundred dollars.
And that's, are those, was that Gateway Greens funded or the club funding?
Club.
Okay, so you have to be a member of the club or can you go with a guest? So you cannot go...
You can if you pay.
You can if you pay. It's not free.
Pay...
For a guest.
You have to pay for a guest.
Oh, for a single?
Yeah.
So if you...
Yes, that's okay.
Kind of like, you know, just like we got off like, okay, I'm just curious.
But they're, it's a different court. I'm not familiar with the synthetic. I know there was a discussion of it and it's kind of a LCHO.
Well, I mean, that's, we don't have a hundred grand spent on bocce court. Eighteen we could do.
I'll have a formal proposal that's really an estimate that also included seating and lumbered structures.
If you've got drainage issues, you've got a ton of stuff to put both of those in because they have to be dead level.
And we had the consultant out I was with in this past week, so...
What do you think?
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I must admit that I was surprised at the dollar amount for the bocce ball courts. Seems like when the gentleman came, talked to us about them two or three times, I got the impression that they were a neck of ninety-eight plus or minus. This is a lot more, even if they're coming from the impact fee, there's still a lot, still a lot of money. And have we decided where they're going to be? The way this thing is worded, I can't tell where you intend to put them, but I think they show it to the board to give us a chance to discuss and hold off where they're going to be. I think Doug has reached the question.
Let the survey ask that question.
Say again?
Let the survey ask that question. Would you rather see it at the field here or over at the Commons Park?
It looks like, yeah, it looks like we're not going to do anything at the pool park like I thought we were.
I think this is where Chris is talking about. So this is the soccer complex. There's an area right here in the back parking lot, so there's the dog park. This area is just not ever used and I think, isn't that right, Chris?
That's right off the pavilion too.
There's this parking, there's a pavilion there, it's just unused.
The gentleman who was here before told us that there's not enough parking space here for the dog park owners, the dog owners.
If you're between the hours of six and eight o'clock, probably not, but, you know, there's, I'm just showing you where the, where the proposal is. There's going to be inherent challenges probably.
To me, it seems like we need to get the surveys back and see what people really want because if there's like one person that says bocce, then we'd be spinning our wheels putting a bocce court in anyway. You know, I mean, we need to see what the interests are from the community. There may be a lot of interest in bocce, there may not be. We don't know because we have no data.
And we're really gathering pricing and I'll have hard quotes on all those facilities so it'll help make those decisions when you see what the residents' response is in the survey. And I only had a couple of brief comments. We're moving forward with the storm, we're in cleaning. They were out in Magnolia Lakes right now working. And one thing you find out, we found one storm structure that was buried about a foot and a half deep and it had filter fabric on it to keep anything from going down. And it was kind of funny because it's at the highest point on the property. There's two other structures there, so it wasn't draining anything anyway. So it wasn't serving a purpose, it was buried. However, we'll end up spending about twelve to fifteen hundred dollars to cap that structure. And that's what we're also running into now. We found a couple that we couldn't get the cleaning equipment through and at the end there was basically a concrete wall poured over the edge of the drainage structure. So we're going to have to go in there and basically take a hydraulic hammer and break it out. So the cleaning is one thing, the intended repairs are another and we will have, we're still moving forward to replacing a drain pipe that's collapsing out in Callaway Greens. And we also had, we're doing the irrigation well testing and they've been out there pump testing that well, checking the chemistry and checking yields on that well. That work is moving forward. And we're also out for about ten days doing some work in Fairway Isles on a sewer line project that we need to replace a fitting that's about eleven feet deep and draining groundwater into the system. And we had a pump set up to de-water the site for five days and the water levels would barely drop and caused a lot of noise and issues with access and we basically put a stop to the whole thing and we're going to re-approach it at a later time. We'll probably end up having to just dig a big pit, put a pump into it, which will impact that neighborhood because of, it has one road in called the Saks, so you have to worry about emergency vehicle access and residents getting in and out. And we're working with the residents right now to get a couple of them to provide construction easements for traffic to actually move up through part of their yard and get in and out if needed.
Yeah, Chris, the only problem with that is that right now, those water levels is as low as they're going to go. We wait thirty days and that water loss comes back, we're going to be delayed until November, December next year. My fear is if we have a catastrophic event out there and that road collapses, what are we going to do with fifty homes?
We're watching it right now and we're going to get access and like Sid, that's fine if you're going to excavate it and take down that deep in that line and have a pump. It's a tough situation.
Yeah, I don't, there's no easy fix and certainly no cheap fix. It's going to be expensive.
No, and with just going in there with the pumps and doing that, de-watering for six days and working with the property owners, you know, there was a tree that had to come out because it was right on top of that and we've expended about twenty thousand dollars in our failure. So it was not a good outcome at all and the residents were very nice, did the noise from those pumps and putting de-watering wells in their front yard and the access and that, they were very, very patient cooperatives.
Yeah.
So we'll be back again, but we certainly struck out on this one. And I had a couple of things I wanted to mention. We have also a copy of our consumer compliance report that's required yearly for utility testing of the water system and that will be mailed out. Leslie, do you have anything you'd like to say about this, our CCR?
Julie, billing manager. This will be mailed out to the May fifteen billing, it was pre-planned off the apartment suite. It'll be available on the website as well.
Okay, so, great. Thank you.
And the survey will come to me that...
Oh, underneath, it should have another page, it's a drafted survey. It's open for any of your suggestions or questions you'd like to remove or add. I just, if you want that in the May fifteen billing, I would be interested.
So we get the, any questions that we want, clarifications, back to who?
To me.
Okay, on the survey?
Quickly.
Okay.
And we've also been making some improvements in the utilities with our generators, putting Quick Connects at all the list stations so we can just basically go in and flood them. And Billy works with us, being an electrician, he also rewires the generators so we can run them off the float so they'll only come on and off when the pumps are on and off versus having to run them twenty-four seven during an emergency period of time. And also so now the staff does not have to be exposed to any live wiring or any hot connections or have to have an electrician out there. It'll basically be roll it out there and plug it in.
Won't you drop dead on comments on the survey so that...
I should, I need to get it at least to the printer by Monday, May thirteenth, like first day in the morning.
So that would be next Friday?
Next Friday.
Yes.
Or they give her any time, I better make it Thursday.
I think suggestion you hand it to them at the workshop.
Yeah, that's...
Thursday.
If anybody has any comments, they should get them to Leslie at the workshop next day on the survey.
Any other questions? It's to you. I didn't really get any detail of what kind of questions to put on there, so it's just for general...
Well, you did, you had a good idea, just quiz the people, would you rather have the bocce, pickleball here or would you rather have it over at the Commons Park? I think it would be more neutral over at Commons Park for a lot of people.
I mean, for me, it's, I look at it a little bit more from a higher level, trying to understand what, I mean, we're just talking about amenities. It's, you know, do the residents feel we have adequate amenities? Would they like additional amenities? And if so, what amenities would they like to have? So if a percentage says that they're interested in bocce, if it's significant, then it's something we need to adhere to. Now, with that, we have an opportunity to fast-track the bocce court on, on property that we have here. It's going to take at least minimum of two to three years before we can build anything in the Commons area. When you go planning, funding, there's a lot of work that goes into it and you're not going to just put two bocce ball courts standalone, you know, in that, in that facility. You would do things in a phased approach. So it's not so much for me whether a resident says, I want it at the soccer field or I want it at the Commons Park. It's more, what does the volume tell you, you know, what's statistically, you know, relevant as far as how many we think are interested that would support? And again, you're putting two, two courts up, you might be able to support, you know, what, two, you could put maybe two, three, you can have like different teams, like a max of six or eight on the court at any given time. So it's not like we need, you know, five thousand people to say, I want bocce, you know, really, it's a smaller amount. But the other thing I will add to that is, in the survey, it's important to know what the, what the demographic information is because, I mean, I think when you do the surveys, we have different sets of population. We've got, you know, different age groups, people that are retired, working, and it's interesting to know who's responding to those because from an amenities perspective, and I've got kids, so I love having amenities for my four boys. But I also think we need to balance that with amenities for all the residents, whether you're retired or you're, you know, working with families or you're single, whatever. We should equally disperse amenities, so if we can incorporate that into the survey, that'd be great.
When you equally disperse amenities, you have to consider how much parking you're going to need because you're going to, you're going to not double the amount of parking you need, but be close to it.
Yeah, well, and some of that doesn't necessarily mean for every soccer field, we're going to have something equal for, you know, for another population. It's just, we're, right now, we're really heavy with our amenities for, let's just say for our users and we're very limited on facilities and programs for the rest of the population.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, if you're in Pelican, you're great. They got more, I mean, I can't wait till my kids get out of the house so I can retire better Pelicans and actually live life a little bit, but, you know, but that's, that's my point and I think that's where people might say, hey, we spent all this money for amenities for a segment of the population that doesn't utilize it. Okay, well, let's also offset that by offering amenities for the, for Gateway Community because that's who we are, we're a community.
Well, she's asked right off the bat where you live. I think the only other question would be retired or not retired. That to me is important because that determines if you're going to have people in the daytime versus people at nighttime.
All right, thank you. Chris, you had informational in here, it looks like registered voters just...
Ten thousand one hundred ninety-eight registered voters in Gateway.
Can I include Pelican?
Yes, that's Pelican and I would imagine that the actual population is probably fifteen to sixteen thousand.
Should, I'm just going to ask the question, should, should that march? For the, for the ability to let our engineer call it in evening, should we go ahead and bring up his task authorization prior to moving to three A?
We're going to come back to Chris because I've got a bunch of stuff for District Engineering. But I, we could do, we could get, we could get Tyler.
Tyler, I'd like to go home.
You're the only one being paid to be here.
Are you? I don't think you want to be here.
Are you healthy yet because I just want to get what Danny got?
I am healthy and that is why I'm here. Well, uh...
Sir, we may have chairman.
The district engineer task authorization. Three B.
Three.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Tyler Wainreich with Tetra Tech for the record. First of all, thank you for bumping me up, I do appreciate that. We did have one item on the agenda and it is the task authorization for the clean water facilities plan. That is a follow-up to our previous discussions regarding the capital improvement projects for future expansion in Gateway. So this is kind of a subsequent item from the CIP report that we prepared for Gateway back in, where was it, February, January, sometime around there. So what this is, is for us to prepare a facilities plan to get funding from the state for these projects. The projects are listed in here, I can go through them if you'd like. It's a twelve-inch irrigation main down Griffin Drive through the FPN L easement, a new irrigation well, a replacement of some pumps out at the irrigation high service pump station, emergency power for the high service pump station, a wet weather discharge system, which is a bunch of sprinklers down the FPN L easement, which would be used to dispose of reclaimed water during wet weather conditions, a irrigation storage tank. And then on the wastewater side, it's a couple of new force mains, one to the plant and one also through the FPN L easement. And then bypass pumps for the master lift stations or I guess terminal lift stations in general. So those are the items that are, would be in the facilities plan, not binding you to actually do any of the project, it just opens funding availability for those projects.
And these were the ones that were growth related, which we talked about, not maintenance replacement.
Correct.
And then the other one is, Stephen, we got into the issue at the time, we're going to talk about this, you were going to see, the issue of the money, where it was going to come from. This would be all now as I look at it, all enterprise?
Oh, yeah.
All enterprise, so we're looking at, what was it, number sixty-two, sixty-three? I forget what the number was.
Our number, our number is six, six-five-one-six-seven.
Six-five-one-six-seven, so that would be coming out of the capital enterprise reserve.
Yes, that's correct.
And this isn't specific, well, it's related, but it, anyway. So in conjunction with this, I think we should also look at if we're taking that area and adhering to the linear park concept, which we talked about, and I think that area is actually kind of earmarked for that. A couple of things that I would recommend is look at paving that last strip where WCI stopped as you get down towards, towards Hampton Park and Stony Brook. You know what I'm talking about?
Like at the very north end?
Yeah.
Hit back up onto Gateway Boulevard?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then also maybe talking to the county about figuring out some way that we can create a cross path.
My problem is though, Doug, is I don't think those are going to fall into that capital growth related issue. These were only, we had that huge...
Well, even, okay, so even if it's outside the CIP, then, I mean, it would be capital, but I guess it could also fall within maintenance, but, but my point is, in addition to this, we might want to consider if we are adopting this and if we're just dumping water on it, that's fine, but I thought one of the values was to, to absorb the property, to also be able to multi-use it as a, as the linear park. I mean, we're doing lakes over there and it is a cut through.
Yeah, we could do that, but I don't think those are going to qualify as CI...
CRM.
No, no, and that's fine. Yeah, and I understand that. I'm just, I'm bringing it up as things that we can, we should be considering as part of, not necessarily this, but as a, you know, a parallel.
We don't know yet, I'll just...
I know, just something for us to think about too.
Mrs. Flair?
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
One of them is on page twenty-five, I'm just going to go right to where it says, "At this next meeting, the board also requests verification from Stephen Blum." He just verbalized it. Verification should come in written form where it says, "As the exact fund source and available funds," I mean, you're just saying about, that's not the exact amount. That should be given to us and it should have been brought to us as requested. My next question is for you, Mr. Nelson, not Mr. Nelson, Mr. Blum, I'm sorry. Page twenty-seven, it says, "Alternative consideration," okay?
Yep.
All right, what do you mean by alternate, alternate, alternate consideration?
So the format that you have to submit a facilities plan to the state is, one of the requirements is you have to consider, have to provide them with alternatives to these projects. So we identify the projects as, we're going to construct a force main. So we got to come up with three alternatives for that. Alternative one can be do nothing. Alternative two can be, you know, and we can size pumps instead of installing a force main. And then you basically describe which one is the best solution. So we would say, you know, we believe building the force main is the best solution because it's cheaper than upsizing all the pumps, because you're not paying for electricity. That's just a made up example, but things like that. You have to give alternatives for each project to convince the state that the project you're proposing is the best solution for your client.
I have one here, first we'll head. Thank you. This has to do with the Stony Brook pond. Who was the person in charge, the overseeing this work?
This, you're talking about the light paint restoration they're doing right now?
Yes.
The contractor is, yeah, that's my attorney.
Right, but who is the contractor?
The inspector.
Yeah, the inspector.
The inspector is the guy that works for us, his name is Josh Hale. I can give his phone number after this if you want, if you need to contact him.
Well, he wasn't there yesterday.
Okay.
And I was asking some questions and I didn't get...
Yeah, I mean, our contact with Gateway is for halftime inspections, so you'll probably see him, sometimes he's out there two days a week, three days a week, just has, but we don't have a full time inspection for him, but if you need to get in touch with him, I can do that.
I just had some questions, so, thank you.
No problem.
I'm finished.
Is that your stomach, Roger?
Not yet.
I'll be just, I'll be here, I'll feel it.
It's close though, weren't it?
I make a motion to approve the CIP facilities plan agreement identified by Tetra Tech.
I don't think it should be, we should motion, I think it should be tabled because we don't have the exact amount as requested.
We have the exact amount, we have his contract exact amount.
Yeah, but not the exact amount from the infomax. That's what was requested.
Well, it's the exact amount, the amount we're talking, it's an engineering fee. Alls we're doing is taking this engineering fee out of the CIP enterprise capital reserve plan. That's it, there isn't anything else.
So it's just to have the exact fund source and available funds that's right there in the thing and we don't have that exactly.
Mr. Tinkle made a motion, do we have a second?
Madam Chairman, I'd be ready to second that motion if Mr. Tinkle will agree that his motion is strictly for the engineering work and not an approval of these individual projects.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You got it.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
The next project, and before you leave, let me ask you, are we still on track to have everything in place for permitting for the expansion of this building for the modular?
This one? Yes, yes, ma'am. And what's our turnaround for this? I think it should put a schedule in here, but it says, and if it did, I'm sorry, miss. Uh, total hundred and thirty-five base.
And, and how about the LDO on the first satellite? Or are you a bad?
It is ready to go, other than the lake maintenance plan, which Stephen and Matty and Elle, you guys don't know who Matty is, Matty works for us also. Stephen and Matty and Elle were working on as far as the maintenance that the county requested, so doesn't matter, there you go.
This is on, this is on light marker?
The LDO for the first satellite.
You have a que, an additional question or not? No, I don't.
Anybody else have anything?
Just one, phase two pond facility plan, where are we at on that? Are we done with that? We had, we had the public hearing on it, didn't we? Losing, I thought we had the presentation, we had the public hearing. What's the, is the next step not to be applying for design phase?
Oh, it's coming up here, I'm thinking for a second.
I was thinking of this phase two...
I actually think it all got accepted by the state. Yeah, it has, yeah. But it's been accepted by the state, everything is ready to go.
But have we gone to, have we motioned to go to the design phase on phase two?
This board, no.
Okay, is that the next step that we need to take?
Um, yeah, I mean...
Because we want to get through the summertime, when you can't do any work anyway, to be in a position to start this work next, like next fall.
Um, sure, we can, we can do that, the board would like to see it.
Can you bring to the next meeting the...
Details.
The detailed proposal? And let's do it this way so that we don't have a problem. If there's fifteen ponds, I'll go second guess what my good friend down here from Pelican Preserve is going to say. Let's bring the ponds, the proposal, if possible, by dollars for the ponds so that we want to go with ponds fifty-two, seventy-five, sixty-one, we have a price and if we go with this pond, we have a price. Somehow delineate the price so that we can, otherwise, I know what's going to happen.
Can I say no to that?
I'm sorry?
Can I say no to that? That's complicated.
Well, the other one is, is that probably we could proceed with the design, but then hold off on proceeding with the construction on the basis of the ability of contractors to do the work and the amount of money necessary. Maybe that's the easy way, not have to make you screw it up and break the bid down by lake, that's...
It just, it may get complicated on the design side about how I would scope that to you, I guess, I'm just thinking.
I'd pull that because you've got to have surveyors and all that. We don't want to have surveyors going out individually on the ponds, let's just forget it, drop, drop, draw the question.
Okay.
It was dumb.
But, but it is, not everything you do is dumb, don't, don't get...
I'm going to take that as a compliment.
Boy, glowing indoors is real. We're not going to debate this issue, are we?
You may have not been at the meeting, classed meeting, when we talked about how important it is to get these flowways right.
I'm going to be talking about that in a minute.
Oh, he's going to talk about that in a minute.
This, this is beyond, this is more a district manager issue because we've got to get bids for bathymetrics and the flowway stuff that you and we, that we talked about. What the issue is, as a result of Pond one twenty-four, that scared the bejesus out of me of what I saw last week. I had the bucket operator drop the bucket down into that three hundred, four hundred foot run. The bucket went down four feet. Supposed to be twelve feet deep. We've had siltation in our ponds, which, you know, no use repeating everything, but from west side of I-75 all the way back through Pelican Preserve, all the way back through the connector deal, that's the flowway project that Chris has got going, all the way to where by, we need to know what this flowway, what condition it's in. And so what we're talking about doing is getting bathymetrics and maybe some core sampling to determine what the material is, if we have to go in and do dredging or something like that.
Sounds good to me.
So that, that's more a Chris issue, I think, at this point.
Um, sorry, Doc. Um, sorry, ma'am.
So, if you just have, next time, just have a presentation in of the design for the thirteen, fourteen ponds that are in Phase Two Facility Plan.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
I was just going to ask if anybody had anything else for the district engineer, and if everybody said no, I was going to say, "Have a lovely evening."
Have a nice weekend.
Uh, I will. I also just, I guess, if you guys click up there, I'm not sure if Chris did already, or was going to, but the, um, the lake project that is going on right now, ninety, one twenty-four, ninety-two, sixty-one, and one twenty-one are all more or less wrapped up. So, we're down to one lake left, and so far, so good. I actually think it's gone really well this year. Yes, ma'am.
Are we allowed?
I'm counting.
Why not?
I live on Lake Ninety-two.
Okay.
For the, for the record, Marilyn tried to transcribe this. Please state your name.
I'm sorry, Sharon DeRosier. I live in Devonshire, Pond Ninety-two.
Okay.
There used to be a concrete drainage or something in the water that you only saw during the dry season.
Head wall.
Head wall, thank you. I didn't know what the term was. They did the amendment, and now it's lots of rocks and whatever, rubble. The head wall does not seem to be there anymore. Wasn't that the drainage from our streets and whatnot that should be going out into the lake?
It still does. So, the, the part that you saw above ground, or above water, was really just the, the top, the head wall of the, of the drainage. The pipe that actually drains the water is, is way, way down lower.
Yeah.
So, it still drains, it's just you don't see that top bit of concrete anymore.
And they, they didn't cover it over with rock. I think part of the problem is this year.
My neighbor said they broke it up.
No, it couldn't get removed.
No, no. The water level has never got down low enough this year that most of those pipes were visible like they had been in previous years. I know that, to be true.
It's down that low now, and it's not there. That's how I, my neighbor said, "Did you notice it's gone?"
I might try to go over there and take a look at it, but I, I think I know where she stopped.
Most of them.
I wanted to ask somebody, and I'm glad you had brought it up. Thank you.
Because all those are submerged, if it were not there, we'd have a problem. We'd have a problem. So, we'll, we'll check it, make sure that's.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Ed.
But, um, yeah, I actually, especially even the, two of the contractors we had worked last year, obviously, we're familiar with, the one new one, Fisher Brothers, I was really happy to work with them. I thought they did a good job, so.
The ponds that have been done, at least the four I have seen, are really, that, all of the contractors did a great job.
They did.
They did a really good job.
I will vouch for that, because I watched a lot of it go on. But I will say that some of my neighbors are not as happy, because the, the, the beginning, the first couple of feet, is nice, small rock and pretty even and whatnot. But then when you go a little further, now that the water level has gone down, there's like.
Bigger.
Well, and that's not bigger rocks, it's like chunks of concrete.
That's the ripraps at the toe of the slope. You should never see that.
Which is fine with me, because I wanted a littoral. But anyway, I'm, so I'm happy, I don't mind. I saw one looks like a turtle and whatever. But, a lot of my neighbors are like, "Wait a minute, Pond one hundred and ten on the other side of Gateway, Devonshire, they have this pretty even, you know, all the way sloped down, blah, 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 and we have this ribrap." Anyway, so, I'm okay with it, but I am curious as to whether, you know, that's going to be the case going forward, because you might get some of the neighbors complaining.
We'll deal with that on a case-by-case basis.
Sounds good, ma'am. All right.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you all, Tom.
Have a good evening and a good weekend. Bethany, we just back to three A two.
This is just a follow-up with the discussion that was at the last board meeting, and it was basically just brought up, Mr. Rod Senior was here, brought it up to discuss, and he said he had had some discussions with the county previously about taking over the soccer field, made a few points. So, we're just bringing it back as a formal agenda item. And it's basically to authorize district manager to talk to Lee County about taking over the soccer fields, and really just looking at the framework, if there would be any money involved in the transaction, exploratory. And I was recommending for it, because when you go to your future budget discussions, if these questions come up, at least I'll have the answers for you, and say, "This is what Lee County Board wouldn't do. Would they pay you for it? Would they take it over? How would they operate it?"
I'll, I'll make the motion that I made last week, that we delay, I'll make the motion to authorize Chris to meet with County and start the process of talking, to see what options are available.
Mrs. Flair?
Okay. I would think that we should table this until the survey goes out.
Well, we, we have a motion.
Yeah. We didn't have a chance to talk before.
Well, we delayed it to this meeting, it was last week. We said it wasn't on the agenda.
So, we have a motion on the table, and we have a second for discussion. Seeing none, I just, I'm assuming that means that the will of the board is not to consider turning the soccer fields over to Lee County.
Say that again?
Since we didn't get a second-tier motion, Ed, I'm assuming that that means that the will of the majority of the board is not to consider turning the soccer fields over to Lee County.
That, that wasn't, that wasn't the motion. The vote, something, but it was me. The vote, the motion was to do an exploratory survey. We don't have any information with which to make a decision one way or the other. Why wouldn't you want that information? That's just good business.
I think if, if the board doesn't have the will to even consider turning it over to Lee County, then there's no point in Chris wasting his time doing an exploratory mission we're not interested in thinking about.
I'd like to hear from the district manager. I, I, I believe it is a good idea.
Well, I, I believe it's a good idea to have the information.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Just, the, uh, motion dies.
Motion dies.
And that was my, my, my staff recommendation there, and would just be to have the information to add to a discussion or budget discussion.
Is there any, they're interested?
While we're on that, then, I'll just bring up the other issues that are associated with this. I understand we have some issues on, with the current soccer vendor. Jungle, jungle drums beat loud in this community. I understand that our vendor is not being prompt with the documentation required by its contract to us. Is, is that correct?
We've been working with them. There's a few aspects of their contract that we've been talking to about, and some of it has to do with just trash pickup and maintenance of the facility.
With a list of people, roster.
Requirements. I brought that up at the last meeting, that we, one of the fellows said, "Well, why do you need this information?" I said, "It's in your contract, and the board asked for residents versus non-residents."
Wait, who said that? Why, who asked, "Why do we need it?"
Mark Allison asked specifically, and refused on two occasions to provide that information.
That is not, that's not the feedback that I've been giving directly to Mark. How long's the Mark been operating, the soccer league? Ten years?
I should verify. It's my understanding we're not getting that.
I'm not sure.
And I don't, he's, he's never not submitted that information.
Have you got it?
No. I've, I've asked him a couple of times for it. I, him and I go back and forth in discussion of payments.
The other one is, I understand we have, and I brought this up at the meeting, and this one threw me for a real curveball, is that we have three agreements that we all talked about at the December meeting, and then I think we approved at the first January meeting. And I brought up that meeting, that I would like to have a requirement that the soccer agreement have the same provisions of the access to records, financial documentation. And I believe, you indicated, Margaret, that we're not going to discuss this because of the late term that we have this year on the contract. But as I understand, two of the contracts have it in there. What happened?
Well, I.
Why do we have two people, we have one soccer league and one flag football league that has to provide the financial information that we had requested on paragraphs thirteen E and F, and the soccer league not providing it?
I don't think we require financials for any of the leagues.
Yeah, we do. It's in the contracts.
It's in their contract.
It's in the contracts. My deal is, if it's in one, it should be in all of them.
I thought we struck that two years ago.
By impression also.
Yeah, I mean, I remember there was much debate on that, because if you're nonprofit, it's not, not required. And this has been going around for a couple of years.
The bottom line is, it's in, it's in contracts right now. It's not that.
Yeah, I don't think that's, I don't think that's accurate.
I think the, I think the issue with flag football is they didn't care. They didn't want it taken out of their contract, so it got left in, and they have had no problem providing Chris with their finances.
And, and, but why is that, why do we even care what their PNO was like? Why is that even a requirement?
Because some people want to kill the soccer. That's one of the ways they're trying to get around.
I don't think that's it, Bill. I think they're, I think it's good business.
No, it's not. You know, if, if I owned a piece of property, and if I'm going to rent to you, I'm going to say, "Can you turn over your books before I rent, rent a house to you?"
It's a little bit different. I'm subsidizing the deal in which you're making a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's a big difference.
But we know that going in. The argument is, the argument is.
You're never going to convince me, so, save your, save your breath.
I think the issue was that the league, the league seems to be balking at providing us the information that we need, like how many are residents versus non-residents that are in the league, and the, we're, and they balk at having to provide any additional funding for anything, including having people that go in and clean up the, um, the kitchen area. They're, and the soccer fields themselves get left with bottles on them and stuff, and they don't, they're not willing to pay somebody, not willing to make sure it gets done before they leave, and they're not willing to pay somebody to come in and do it. So, then that ends up falling on all the residents of Gateway to clean up after.
If they're not.
The leagues that are.
If they're violating.
Your statements aren't accurate. And.
If the violation, if they're.
That's the, that's the feedback I'm getting from staff.
That's what I'm getting also. It's.
It's not, it's not the whole, it's not the whole story.
Well, we need, we need to get that resolved. They need to be in compliance with the contract, period. All, all three vendors.
Yeah, I'm working, I'm working with them, I would do it on a regular basis, and there's been improvements across the board on, on those requirements, but some of it's been remiss.
Well, I know for a fact that's not likely. What, what is our obligation? How often do we empty the trashcans at the, at the parks?
Well, we, we, we empty the trashcans there every day, and let the book.
No, we don't. You've got, we empty those trashcans at the soccer park every day.
Yes, sir.
At what time? In the morning or in the afternoon?
In the morning.
In the morning?
Yeah. And Mainscape does an extensive job on.
But not on weekends?
No, no, on weekends. We had, no, we have Janam Territorial that does the building and the trashcans close by on weekends. And where the issue was, was between the leagues and Saturday, that fields were left trashed Saturdays, and then residents were coming out Saturday evenings and Sundays, and the fields were, the trashcans were full, and they weren't emptied by the leagues. And that's what I brought up to them, and I've been working with them on. And also cleaning, cleaning the snack bar and leaving it in sanitary condition.
I'm going to move on to the three A three, which is.
And it's just a property on Little Jet that put in a pool in the backyard, and the pool permanent structure is not going to encroach into the lake maintenance easement, but there will be an encroachment about three feet of the landscape buffer that would go into the lake maintenance easement. And traditionally, we've recommended against anything structural or permanent in that easement, but considering this will just be landscaping bushes that could be removed, we recommend you to move ahead with it. Move approved.
Second. I'm going to make a request that the motion include the fact that if for any reason the district had to remove the Mainscape and our lake maintenance easement, that we would not be responsible for payment of replacement.
And, and that language is in the agreement.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
They are required to, A, remove it, and we will not replace it.
Just wanted to make sure. Okay.
And then the five, what was our first?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, this one.
So, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Need a pause. Okay. Three A four, purchase of modular office.
But we did it the last meeting.
Well, we did, we did. And the only, the only reason I brought this up, Mr. Tinkell, is at the last meeting, we just basically had a recommendation that we take the majority of the money out of the enterprise fund, and it was basically, we do everything on the seventy, twenty, ten split. So, I just changed this around to a seventy, thirty split, because there is no capital allocation coming from Pelican, so that any of the future costs associated with this, seventy percent would be enterprise fund, and thirty percent would be general admin.
I'll, I'll defer on that, at least on May the ninth.
Right. So, that, and that's all. I, I just changed the allocations around to seventy, thirty.
And we're going to make sure we have all the permits before we.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we've left it, let the vendor know that, and we're, we're moving ahead with some portions of, you know, getting the power laid out, and some of the other preliminary work, but that's about it.
So, this was, again, informational.
Information, yeah.
Go ahead.
Chris, uh, we've got budgets coming up. Are you working on some, uh, G I S proposals and bathymetric proposals on the flowway?
There's a meeting with the consultant tomorrow with G I S, and next week, I will be talking bathymetrics and getting dollar figures for flowway work.
Fantastic.
Did you say C I S?
G I S.
G, oh, G I S. Then the last one is, what's, do we have an effective date for a notice proceed on the flowway project?
Uh, the effective date will be this week, at the contract sign.
Great. Is that water level there? They're not going to get a better deal, especially over there on yours.
It's, it's tough right now, and I was actually out there at Colonial with that tower the other day.
I've been chomping at the mouth.
Now, we don't have an issue, like, or do we have an issue, on an easement to get in there to do the flowway for Cross Connect, the FPL?
Oh, I put in a, a right-of-way use application with, to do that work, its maintenance work.
Well, there's an easement there.
Right.
The problem was, the grantor, or the one that received the easement was Worthington.
Right.
And I don't know that it ever got in our name, but that canal, channel is in that easement. So, I don't know that we have an issue. Do we have to go to FPL, or do we have to go to Worthington and have them assign us?
If we need a partial assignment, I'm sure they'll do it. I think John.
I, 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 what I was worried about is going back to FPL and spooking them on something that they've already granted.
No, it's, uh, and basically, anytime you're going to do work in their easement, it's a courtesy and a four-hundred dollar, and it goes to their real estate. You send them a set of plans to make sure it's not interfering with their towers or any of their work.
Yeah, if you just tell me the exact area, Chris, I guess, if we need anything from Worthington.
That should, that should have been transferred to us a long time ago, but anyway. But that, he's not going to get any better construction conditions to work in right now, because there's no water up there that's flowing.
Anything else for district engineer? District Council?
Uh, I'm going to have the project apps, ask list, if you have any questions. I have a follow-up items on the next board meeting agenda. One is with regards to, with regards to the zoning verification letter that was obtained by WCI for the FPL easement. I think it still needs some additional materials or representations, but I'll provide it to the board, we'll have that discussion.
Does that include, you're going to, of a pro and con that I've asked for for much and much? Because if I don't, if I don't see a pro and con, I'm not going to vote in favor of this.
I think I provided.
Put everybody on notice.
Yeah, I think I provided that earlier, a month or two ago, and previously, I provided you the copy of that.
You mean, pro and con for us taking it over?
Yes. I, I provided that, I think, about two months ago at board meeting.
I, I want to say I saw it, but I don't remember.
I'll resend that, that, I'll resend.
I would appreciate that if I have a metal plaque.
I have those too. There's little spots up here, there were, something used to reside, and it doesn't any longer, and I'm trying to figure out what was in there. But, I, I, and again, been working, Charles Mann, it's been very cooperative, been working on a very, a number of items with regards to Corina Phase Two. We have one issue that was resolved that appears Lenar is willing to pay the fees for the association for their attorney's review of the partial assignment of the easement, which.
Twenty-six hundred dollars.
Twenty-six hundred dollars, which, the only thing we're waiting on is to get, I think, a report back if we can, as to the condition of the drainage facilities. And the difficulty there is the time of year, to try to determine what the condition of the facilities are, the drainage pipes, everything else. So, I would like to wrap it up, because we only had that little rain and administrative, I think we have everything else ready. We have the assignment of easement, we have the settlement agreement, we have the agreement for Lenar, WCI, to pay attorney's fees for the HOA. So, if there's a way, I've been talking with Tyler and Chris about how to see what we can do to ascertain the condition of the drainage facilities. Bob, if you have scuba gear, you can use. You're volunteer.
Well, I know the piping is good. The only thing we don't know is that PVC piece that they were worried about being, you know, the parallel pipe. that they were worried about being, you know, the parallel pipe, that, no one's ever inspected that, but I mean, I can imagine a situation.
Well, if it's PVC that runs parallel to the flowway-
Yes, it runs-
We are not accepting that, we're not, we're not-
Well, then that's the only, everything else been inspected.
Okay, so we'll schedule that for the board, to accept the bill of sale and everything else. With regards to this, we can wrap that up and get that off everybody's list. Uh, and the road turnover, again, Chris, as he mentioned, had some preliminary numbers, estimates, as to certain road striping activities that may be necessary for the three roadway segments, and the five-year, ten-year look ahead as to, uh, possible improvements, and then he'll be finalizing the other issues that are, like signage lighting, so we can bring that to the board for a final determination, because, again, we have WCI going to give one roadway, we have the condominium, industrial condominium, which is going to reactivate the organization for the sole purpose of conveying at Congress Lake Drive and Express Court, that long stretch, and so we would just have one left, and, uh, that would be nice, if the board wants to continue on that path, it'd be nice to know. So, Chris, I don't know when, Chris might have the other numbers, but hopefully in the next month or so, Chris?
Oh, yes, sir.
Next month, you think, I'll be, so we can wrap that up. And again, just following up with WCI, I think it may have another solution, I have this claim with the R B side, so.
Any questions for Council? Mrs. Flair, go ahead.
Glasses, I have no tenure for glasses. I'm wearing my spares that are retro back to when I was a teenager.
I think she's sitting in a hole.
I think her chair sunk, she looked like she just got down. Pick on the source.
I've had the same problem, so it's okay, I just-
Okay, where actually are we with the ADA website contract?
Michael's, you ran away.
I've got, I'm looking at what Michael has, if we can get him back in here and talk about that.
Anything else?
No, that wasn't it.
Okay.
On that, on that topic, interestingly enough, what's making the rounds are on the look of Government Attorneys Network, uh, people try to find vendors that can do closed captioning for video materials, and that's sort of the latest range of all that stuff, because that's what that comes with, is you need to have closed caption.
When Mike comes in, he can also, we need to be looking at a timeline for the budget process.
They gave it to us.
What we're going to be doing, do we-
That was two, two meetings ago.
Two meetings ago?
Yeah.
Chris, I'm going to pull that out, okay, thank you.
ADA!
Yeah. By the way, I get the same reaction from Michael when I ask him about it.
No, I'm not sure, since the last board meeting, to follow up with him, I've emailed him three times, including once this morning, and I've not heard one thing back.
Wow.
I'm just simply asking if he's heard anything about the agreement that we were waiting on, and I haven't heard anything back.
Wonderful.
Don't kick that dog.[1789.22]